City Council Manager, I'm sorry, City Manager, your staff, for bringing this forward, putting it in such a way that I think is very understandable. Very competent staff. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. James. I hope that the council approves this. I think it'll be good for all the taxpayers in the city of Lemon Grove because this is what we pay taxes for, is for our parks. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. And I do not have any additional speaker slips at this time. And so I'll continue on with Councilmember LaBarren.
Thank you very much. Thank you, former Mayor Mary Sessom, for your comment. This question is for Mike? Okay, so I just want to make sure, okay, so everybody is clear here that back in 2021, by executive decision by the mayor and the city manager, they decided that they would request money from Akila Weber's office. There was an opportunity for the city to get money to work on, do anything that had to do with recreation and infrastructure. And an executive decision was made to ask for $400,000 to create, so that's almost half a million dollars, to build two bathrooms at Berry Street Park and Washington Park. When the public became aware of that, they were very, very, very upset. And like I've already brought to everybody's attention here, the public thinks that that's extremely irresponsible, that that much money is being spent on two bathrooms. They actually question why that is. People can literally build an entire house for much less than that. So spending $400,000 on two bathrooms seems very odd to the taxpayers.
Councilmember LaBarren, please get to your question.
Thank you. So... Just to be clear, Mike, when city staff shot that shot to Akila Weber's office and asked for the $400,000, at that point, that money, that amount of money was asked for because you, as the head of the Public Works Department, had asked for bids on how much it would cost to construct two bathrooms? Or how many, how did that happen? How did we get to that $400,000 number?
So the $400,000 number was an estimate that was provided by staff that reached out to a vendor that was able to provide prefabricated restrooms.
One vendor? One vendor, Mike?
Correct. It was a, a vendor.
You didn't shop around? Usually we shop around to give taxpayers the best rate.
Councilmember LaBarren, you're out of order. You're talking over staff. This is not your turn to talk. It is the staff's turn to talk. You're out of order.
I apologize. Sorry, Mike. Please continue.
So when staff created this proposal for the Assemblymember Dr. Weber's office, it was really based upon the feedback that staff received from the Capital Program Workshop. And when I say that, we talked about-
Mike, I'm sorry, you're going off topic because my question was, how many estimates, how many estimates did you get to come to that number?
Because typically when we ask- You're out of order. You are talking over staff.
No, ma'am, I'm clarifying. And I don't want to waste the public's time with staff talking in circles.
If you are clarifying the number, you asked a question, he gave you an answer.
So we can move on. We don't need to further confuse the public with-
Please ask your second question. Thank you very much.
Okay, I just want to be clear. I don't want to confuse the public who's sitting here and-
I will assume that you have no additional questions? Do you have an additional question?
I do.
Please proceed.
Okay, I'm sorry you're confused. I have another question. And again, I just want to clarify for the public so that no one's being misled. Thank you for letting me know that you did not shop around when you-
Please ask your question, Councilmember LaBarren.
The next question is, okay, so from those $400,000 that we're spending on building two bathrooms, because we, as the city leadership, asked for that money, based solely on asking for one bid from one company. And so we didn't shop around to find the best rate for our taxpayers. The next question is, the project, so the funds recently, what was it, in October? Okay, in October of this, of last year, October 2021, Akila Weber's office reached out to the city, letting us know that those $400,000, they were, we were going to be receiving them. And that money pays for building the two bathrooms, not for maintaining them or anything that will be on the taxpayers of the city. Okay, so the project will be done in December, December 31st of 2023, so next year. The end of next year, the bathrooms need to be done. And then by June, we're going to get a ream- I have no, in the staff report, it says we're going to get reimbursed. The city's going to get reimbursed. Just correct me if I'm wrong. We're going to be reimbursed for $80,000 at that point? So we're going to, are we going to be receiving funds along the way to pay for this? Or are we going to pull money out of the general fund as we go to pay for this? And then get a final reimbursement at the end in June of 2024?
I think the reimbursement process is going to depend upon which direction staff recommends to the council to move in. And I say that because a purchase and installation of a prefabricated restroom is really going to be more of a one-stop shop, purchase, and install with potentially one invoice because that timeline would be a lot quicker.
Sure.
Now, the, I say there could be multiple scenarios where we're requesting funds because, again, just to highlight that staff will do come back to the city council with an analysis of maybe a prepab isn't the way to go because of rising costs, rising whatever. And maybe it's a full renovation, which was one of the two options that are a part of the capital-outletting process. I envision that if staff were to go down that path, there would be more frequent cost reimbursement requests moving forward.
So just to be clear, we're getting reimbursed every step of the way. As soon as we submit, we'll be getting reimbursed?
I will have to stop the questions at this point in time. That is the third question. Until now, I'm moving on to Councilmember Mendoza.
Okay, really, that was kind of, that was just clarifying that question. Make sure that we're all understanding what you're saying.
Councilmember LaBarren, you're out of order. You are not following protocol, following protocol that is in place regarding the city council meetings. You are talking out of turn. And it is now time for Councilmember LaBarren, not LaBarren, Councilmember Mendoza, to ask her questions. Thank you.
For the record, thank you for impeding the public from getting information that they asked, that I asked on their behalf.
I respectfully ask you to stop and desist. Stop. I'm moving on to Councilmember Mendoza.
My, my first question is, when you, when you go out to bid on this, will we have any... I'm asking that you bring this back to the council for input. I just want to make sure that we have input into deciding on the design and whether, you know, whether we want to do a prepab or a new build.
Yes, staff will definitely bring this back for full council consideration. And even before we get to the point of advertising the bid, but then the awarding itself is, requires the city council authority. So the design, let me back up, the decision of whether we're going prepab or full renovation to include options of what, what is it going to aesthetically look like? And how is it going to fit the existing kind of flow of the park? I think they're all things that staff will bring back for full city council consideration.
And I had kind of a clarifying question too, and that was just, when, when this process was initiated back in April, it was, it was very, we had a very short timeline to, my understanding was we had a very short timeline to make this request. And so the only reason you only sought one, you didn't go out to bid or anything, but you just needed to get an idea of how much this might cost so that you had an amount of money to request. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. It was about less than a week. And then the intent of, of the request was to focus on some type of public infrastructure that would support park recreation. Capital infrastructure.
Well, I'm, I'm ready at this point to make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving the application for the local assistance, thank you, Audrey, the local assistance specified grant from California Department of Parks and Recreation.
We do have a motion on the floor. Thank you so very much. I will continue on to Councilmember Gastel. I'll turn this over to you.
Okay, I'd be happy to second the motion. I wonder if our Director of Public Works wants to comment on, on two things? Because I, because I think there are two things that people might be wondering about, might want a little bit more insight about. One is, is, is just to a layperson, it seems like it's an awful lot of money for two bathrooms. And whether you could comment, comment on that and how, how you arrived at, at the expenses that we would expect? And the, the other question is, the timeline actually seemed, considering that the project looks, maybe perhaps it looks deceptively simple. When I looked at it, I wasn't sure why it would take about two years to complete. So if you want to comment on those two things, maybe, maybe give us a little more insight. I sure appreciate it.
Yes, so the, the actual cost estimate was, was initially, was when I reached out to local, or staff reached out to local cities that had performed almost identical projects to this, the cost per unit was approximately $200,000. So the next step that staff took was to then go and find and seek out the vendor that provided that same restroom to see, okay, does this cost estimate still in line with what was provided to the other city? And so really, that's, that's what the estimate came down to. It's not, it's not a formal bid, in which case we would have to follow our purchasing ordinance accordingly. But in this instance, it was two restrooms with a similar bid that a neighboring city just completed. And so that was kind of the baseline behind this cost, the amount per restroom. Regarding the timeline, it is a little bit longer, but that doesn't, that's the, the latest thing you can go. So the grant performance period goes through June of 2024. But it can be completed much faster. So the, the beginning of the grant period is actually July of 2021. So from the, during this entire timeline, the grant, any, as long as the project is approved, any type of expenditure related to this project can be reimbursed by the state. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. And we do have a motion and a second for this particular agenda item. At this point in time, the only thing that we can discuss right now is the motion, being that those two things have already been, have already moved forward. So I am very supportive of this project. And I will check in with anyone else to see if they have any comments regarding the motion. Councilmember LaBarren?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, first, I want to ask my council colleagues if they would support us deliberating because we haven't been granted that opportunity. So far, it's just been the opportunity for councilmembers to ask questions. Typically, what would happen amongst decision-makers is that you ask questions, you reflect on answers that you receive, and then you deliberate. And I noticed that Councilmember Jennifer Mendoza made a motion to not deliberate. I do want to maybe implore you if you would, if you would want to actually allow us as decision-makers to be able to discuss this a little bit before we rush to a judgment and to a decision.
What I will do is I will refer to our city attorney regarding what we can and cannot do at this time.
Well, we can revoke Councilmember Mendoza's motion to stop us from discussing this.
Turn to the attorney. Thank you.
You can, excuse me, you can make a motion to table the, the motion that's currently in front of you, which would require a second and then a vote to table, and then go back to deliberations, or right now is the time to discuss.
Yeah, thank you. So, thank you. So as the city attorney made clear, there is still an opportunity to discuss this. And so again, Councilmember Mendoza, I want to put this back on you. Would you be in support of tabling the motion so that we can discuss this a little bit further? Perhaps discuss this in front of the taxpayers a little bit more? I think that'd be a great opportunity for all of us, not only us as decision-makers, but the taxpayers so that they can see where our thought process is behind this.
At this time, I will repeat the statement of our city attorney, which was, you can make a motion to table the motion.
Yes.
But it would require a second in order for us to vote on it. Otherwise, we will have to, we will, okay, so-
Point of order?
Yes.
I think we can, I think we can just go ahead and discuss the motion.
Thank you. Well, and, and in that case, we, I will turn this over to our city clerk. And we will go ahead and vote?
No, no, but instead, but before we vote, we can discuss it. We don't, we don't need to ask, we don't need to ask Councilmember Mendoza's permission. We can just go ahead and discuss the motion. But, but we need to wait for you to call on us, of course.
So I'm going to turn it back over to our city attorney for clarification. I want to make sure that we get this right.
Yeah, this is a little overly complicated.
I'll just repeat. So anybody can make a motion to table, which would require a second in order to push that aside, or you can move forward with discussions before the vote is taken. Options, two options. First option, motion to table in a second, or second option, continue with discussions until the vote is taken because you have a motion and a second.
Okay, so we can continue to discuss. I just wanted to make sure that we're following all the policies and procedures so that when I start explaining and deliberating and explaining to everybody here my thought process, I don't get cut off by anybody. So I just want to make sure that everything is clear for us.
So at this point in time-
We can discuss? Is that okay with you, Madam Mayor? I don't want to get-
I need, I want to make sure that I have clarification. So at this point in time, with the motion and the second, is this time for discussion? Yes or no?
You can allow discussion on the motion and the, on the motion that's on the table right now.
So the only thing for clarification here for everyone that can be discussed is the motion on the table.
And like the city attorney said, we can motion to table that motion so that we can continue to discuss. You're wasting all of our time, Madam Mayor. Time is money. People are here to talk business. Can you please allow us to discuss and move on?
Follow the rules. Councilmember LaBarren, you're being disruptive. You're speaking-
I would like to make a motion to table the motion that Councilmember Mendoza put on the floor. Do I have support from any of my colleagues to do that? Keep in mind, it's an opportunity for us as decision-makers to let our, the people who we represent, our constituents, know exactly what we're thinking. So do I have any of my council colleagues' support in taking up this great opportunity that we have?
Thank you so much for making the motion. I'm checking in. Is there a second? As we do not have a second for the motion-
I'm sorry, no one took up the opportunity to be transparent with the community.
Councilmember-
Did I make another point of order?
Council, yeah, Councilmember Gastel.
I think the reason I'm not, the reason I'm not seconding the motion to table is because that would put off the item to a future meeting.
No, it would not, George Gastel. I'm sorry, you're incorrect.
Unfortunately, I have to stop the conversation. I have to stop the conversation. I actually see in our-
You are wasting the public's time. This, this is quite ridiculous, Madam Mayor.
And so what I'm going to do is I'm going to stop right now. I'm stopping the motion. I'm stopping the conversation because it's important that every single person here know what the rules are regarding the quorum in this city council meeting. And I am going to read the San Diego Municipal Code into the record so that you know that, number one, we all have to respect our government and our government processes. And in this moment, that is not happening right now. It's not happening here at this platform, and it's not happening in the audience. And so, please listen. Lemon Grove Municipal Code 2.14.160. The rules of the quorum enforcement indicates that while a city council is in session, all persons must preserve the order and the quorum of the session. That includes everyone here at the platform and everyone in the audience. A council member may not delay or interrupt the proceedings or the peace of the city council, disturb any council member while speaking, or refuse to obey the orders of the city council or the mayor, except as otherwise provided in this chapter. Any person who disrupts or impedes the orderly conduct of a city council meeting by making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks by becoming boisterous while addressing the city council or by engaging in any other disorderly conduct will be immediately barred from future audience before the session of the city council by the mayor, unless permission to continue is granted by a majority vote. A, any person who disrupts or impedes the orderly conduct of a city council meeting by acting in a disorderly or insolent manner towards or by becoming boisterous while addressing the city council, a council member or staff member is subject to the criminal penalties of this code. I will repeat that. Criminal penalties. Any person who fails on demand of the mayor to comply with unlawful order is subject to criminal penalties of this code. That includes everyone in the audience and everyone sitting here at this platform. The city manager may designate one or more appropriate persons to act as sergeant-at-arms to carry out all orders and instructions given by the mayor for the purpose of maintaining order and the quorum at the city council meeting. Upon instruction of the mayor, it is the duty of the sergeant-at-arms to place any person who violates the order and the quorum of the meeting under arrest. Under arrest. And cause the person to be prosecuted under that code. The complaint must be signed by the mayor or other appropriate persons who are present in the meeting. And so in this moment, I am respectfully requesting that each and every person allow us to do our business. And I'm requesting that the council member, she knows the rules, she has the booklet right here at the platform, follow the process. Follow the process. Now, we will return back to our agenda item. We do have that motion and the second. We did have an alternative motion that did not move forward. And so now we are back to our motion. And at this time, because things are so tense here in, in this council, I'm just going to go to the city clerk, and we're going to go ahead and take the vote.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Aye.
Councilmember Gastel?
Aye.
Councilmember LaBarren?
Councilmember LaBarren, I made a motion to table the motion Councilmember Mendoza made to stop council from discussing use of public funds. I asked my colleagues for a second-
This is not the time to provide a statement. We are voting, are you voting aye or are you voting nay?
I asked my colleagues for a second and no one agrees to-
This is not the time to deliberate or to provide comments. Are you voting aye or nay? Are you voting yes or no?
And no one agrees to discuss the public's business.
Unfortunately, at this time, the council member refuses to vote.
No, ma'am, I'm explaining my vote, which is going to be upcoming.
This is not the time to explain vote.
Madam Mayor, do you have an issue with council members, people, someone who people elect explaining their vote to the public so that the public can hold them accountable? Madam Mayor, do you have an issue with people explaining their vote so that the taxpayers can hold the people who they elect to do a job for them accountable?
Motion carries three, one.
Excuse me, ma'am, I meant to not cast my vote.
We're going to take a five-minute break. Thank you very much.
So as you folks are all seeing, there's a real issue with lack of transparency in our local government. And this is exactly why this community does not trust their elected leaders. So I ran on a platform, actually, of accountability and transparency. You see that there are elected officials who are completely determined, determined to keep all of you folks in the dark. I was asking that we discuss how the public's money is being used. And as you see, no one, no one supports that. So I am going to explain my vote today because while the vote was cast without me being able to do that, I really do care that you folks know exactly why I'm voting the way that I am. So today and at past times, when we have discussed this irresponsible decision to allocate scarce funds to projects the taxpayers don't support, this council continues to deny the public from receiving answers. As you see, staff isn't prepared. They don't do their job on behalf of the taxpayers. And actually, to their, to their defense, this kind of behavior is enabled by these elected officials. As you heard, no bids were thrown out there. There's no one doing the job to try to find the best rate for the taxpayers. So for those reasons, my vote today would have been no. I wasn't allowed to cast it. And I wasn't allowed to explain my vote, but that's, those are the reasons why. And whether you folks agree with that or not, I want you all to know the thought process behind my decisions so that you're able to hold me accountable.
For 1B Payment Plan. And so it was pulled by Councilmember LaBarren. And so I will turn this over to Councilmember LaBarren to ask her two questions. Thank you. Councilmember LaBarren, please ask your two questions.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Were we on the payment demands? There was three items that I had pulled from the consent calendar. One was Item 1B, which is the payment demands, Item 1E, I believe, and Item 1D. Which item are we on right now?
We are currently on Item 1B Payment Demands.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I want the public to be aware that every time the city cuts a check on a, in, in an attempt to be transparent, every time the city cuts a check, they include those checks on what's known as a payment demand summary. And, and those are posted-
Councilmember LaBarren, please ask your questions. Thank you.
Those are posted online and they come with our agenda packets. So for example, today, there's a payment demand list. And it has a list of all checks cut within the last, you know, two weeks or so. And, you know, this question's going to be for City Manager Lydia Romero. And do we have the, yeah, it's going to be for Lydia Romero. But, you know, when our finances are, they're not well, you know, we can't work things like law enforcement.
Councilmember LaBarren, please ask your questions. This is not, this is not the, the time. You're not following the direction.
I'm giving context before I ask my question so that the city manager is not confused.
Please ask your two questions. Thank you.
You know, at a time when we can't afford law enforcement, we can't afford road repairs, we can't afford rec opportunities for our youth or our families, every penny counts. And I noticed that on the past two list, payment demands list, we are swamped in legal fees. And as we all know, you know, attorneys are very expensive. And and I noticed here that, that last meeting, which was maybe a week and a half ago or so, we cut a check to a woman by the name of Deborah Riley, an investigating attorney, and we cut it for eight grand, close to nine. And then I noticed here, we cut another check and it was for 14 grand, actually, close to 15. So if we do the math, 15 plus 8, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, that's about 23 grand within the past couple of weeks going to Deborah Riley. And please, please clarify or correct me if I'm mistaken, but, you know, after I started asking for receipts on certain projects-
Councilmember LaBarren, please ask-
Councilmember LaBaron, please ask your question.
After I started for receipts-
Councilmember LaBaron, please ask your question. If you do not ask your question, then I will assume that you do not have any questions at this time. Do you have questions?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll proceed with my question. After I started asking for receipts and the council launched an investigation of me, for what reason I don't know, I was asking questions about services that we pay to third-party vendors, really trying to ask questions that have to do with accountability and tracking, making sure that taxpayers' funds are getting used properly. And then so I find it quite quite odd that after I do that, council would go into closed session and then vote to investigate me and really to stop me from doing my job. And then we paid, we're paying this woman by the name of Deborah Riley to do that investigation.
Councilmember LaBaron, you are refusing to obey the orders of the presiding officer. I have asked you several times to ask your question. And rather than asking your question, you're making these statements. If you do not have any questions, then we will go ahead and we will proceed with the vote.
Madam Mayor, thank you. I'm sorry. I was getting right to it, actually. So please mistake me if I'm, please correct me if I'm mistaken. I'm sorry. But is Deborah Riley the person who in the past two weeks we cut at least twenty-three thousand of taxpayer funds? Funds that the taxpayers are expecting to be used on the roads? Things like the rec center? Things like helping our homeless population? Things like revitalizing our downtown? Is that money going towards investigation of me?
Deborah Riley is an investigator who was hired to investigate interference with third-party contracts.
So the answer is yes. Within the past two weeks, folks, your money, the money that you want to use-
Councilmember LaBaron, please ask your second question. Your question was, you asked your question, your question was answered. Please ask your second question. Thank you.
Thank you. The money is going for things I'm quite sure you folks don't agree with. Let's see. Next question has to do, it still has to do with legal fees 'cause there's a whole bunch on here. Would you be able to explain what we're paying William Burke, William and Sorensen? Let's see, this is over twenty-five thousand. It's close to like thirty to forty thousand in legal fees for different things. Could you elaborate a little bit on some of this stuff? And I'm not asking that you tell us the legal strategy, because clearly you can't do that. But can you elaborate a little bit on this? Because I noticed that every single week, we get at least thirty thousand dollars in legal fees. Some from your law office, many not.
Sure. So my firm, Burke, William and Sorensen, is a contract firm. The city contracts with Burke, William and Sorensen to provide city attorney services. I am appointed as the city attorney, so oftentimes my time will show up under the general line item, which is general services.
Thirteen thousand for this week.
So what I do is I review contracts, I analyze legal issues for staff, I interact with staff, I interact with the city council, I attend city council meetings. And that oftentimes, oftentimes is covered by the general line item. Though there are other line items that are included as well, that are broken out by litigation, code enforcement, and other matters that would require attention. So for example, one of the line items is Farson versus the city of Lemon Grove.
Wait, really quickly, could you tell me what the six, the nearly seventeen thousand dollars in legal fee is going for? It's invoice number one five zero one.
You're interrupting the city attorney while she is answering your question. You are out of order and out of control. I will turn this back over to the city attorney to complete her answer to your second question. Thank you.
I'm sorry if you felt I was out of control, Kristen, but could you answer that question? Where did this nearly seventeen thousand dollars go?
Councilmember LaBaron, please let the city attorney complete her answer to your second question.
It's zero eight two five zero 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 four, zero zero zero.
At this time, Councilmember LaBaron cannot follow the rules that are established by the city council. She is out of order and out of control. And so at this time, I'm just gonna go ahead and see if we have a motion for this item.
Oh no ma'am. Taxpayers wanna know where that money's going. We're not moving on. Kristen, I was trying to help you because there's a lot of numbers and it's very small print. Do you know where I'm talking about? Seventeen thousand. What is that for? No ma'am, you're not gonna stop me from getting the answer from Kristen. She's prepared to answer. Kristen, could you please answer? Kristen, you have a roomful of people who pay your salary. Can you please answer?
The chair is in charge of the meeting. I will take direction from the chair.
Very interesting.
If she wants me to answer, I will.
Do you have a problem with the taxpayers knowing where their money's going? What they're paying seventeen thousand dollars for in legal fees?
As mentioned, you cut the city attorney off while she was giving you-
She's prepared to answer. Just answer the question, Madam Mayor. Are you okay with the people knowing where their tax dollars is going? Seventeen thousand dollars of it?
I am seeking a motion from the elected official regarding this particular agenda item.
No ma'am. We're gonna get an answer from Ms. Kristen if you'll allow it. Are you okay with the taxpayers knowing where their money's going? Because Kristen is prepared to answer. She's just waiting on you. Will you pull the trigger on that? Will you allow that? Will you allow her to answer that question?
Unfortunately, we have to take another five minutes.
No, we don't. You're wasting taxpayers' time with your foolishness. Will you allow the city attorney, somebody who is paid by the taxpayers, to answer a question about where their money's going? It's very simple, Madam Mayor.
So at this time, we will take another five-minute break. Thank you. Can you hear answer to the second question of Councilmember LaBaron? Thank you. Thank you. So I just wanna start off by saying again, this is payment demands for services that have already been provided. So my firm bills the city and the bill is sent to the city for payment. So these are services that have already been rendered. And I'll just go line and by line on them from my firm. The first one is general services, which we discussed. Second one, which is oh eight two five zero 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 two, that's code enforcement. The next one, which is-
Code enforcement of what? What does that mean? Code enforcement? Because we have a, the city pays Paolo Romero to be our code enforcer? So why are we paying attorneys to do code enforcement?
If there are letters that need to be sent by the city attorney's office, for example, or if a review needs to be done of a citation that's being issued, or if there are settlement discussions, for example, that would fall under code enforcement.
Got it. Thank you.
The next one is zero 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 three. That is the sanitation district. So the sanitation district has a totally different billable number because it it has a different financial structure. So that allows the sanitation district to keep those services separately billed.
Why do we need to pay an attorney for sanitation?
There's a project happening right now, which is a sewer rehabilitation project. And there were some reviews needed for the documents. In that sewer rehabilitation project.
Thank you, Kristen.
Please let me interrupt the response here. At this time, can you continue to run down the payment demands specifically as requested in the second question? Because now we are up to four questions from Councilmember LaBaron, which exceeds the two question limits that was specified for this agenda item. Thank you.
Kristen, you're doing a fabulous job. The very brief description that you're giving is really, really, the public appreciates it. Thank you, Kristen.
The next one is zero 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 four, which is the affordable housing litigation that's been going on for a very long time. And so that's winding up, which is why the billbory, there's not much there.
What is that?
It's the Affordable Housing Coalition versus pretty much every city in the county, which is litigation stemming from prior responsibilities with regard to redevelopment agencies that will round up and done away with by the state. So it's a very old litigation, but it's winding up slowly. The next one, which is zero 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 eight, is Farson versus the city of Lemon Grove.
That's the nearly seventeen thousand dollars in legal fees paid to your firm?
Yep. We're on to trial in that case. The next one is zero zero one one point zero zero one, that's Pickaxe Holdings and Chris Williams versus the city of Lemon Grove. That's his first case. The next one, which is zero-
I'm sorry, did you say Pickaxe Holding versus Lemon Grove? That's Chris Williams?
Pickaxe, Pickaxe, Pickaxe Holdings and Chris Williams versus the city of Lemon Grove.
Is that in the case where the council member got in altercation with him?
Councilmember LaBaron, you are now up to seven questions. Please allow the city attorney to complete her response to your second question. No more questions. Thank you. And the final line item is Pickaxe Holdings and Chris Williams versus the city of Lemon Grove. And that's his second case on that line item.
Is that, that's five thousand dollars. What is that case?
Kristen, it's a writ of mandate, which he brought-
What does that mean?
To oppose a decision on a conditional use permit that was denied.
So to oppose a decision regarding a dispensary?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Kristen. So the seventeen thousand dollars is to fight Sean Farson and then five thousand dollars is to fight Chris Williams. Twelve thousand dollars is to pay you for whatever it is that you do for the city on a monthly basis.
General service.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And so at this time, do we have a motion?
I'd like to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Do you see, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gassel?
Aye.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Aye.
Councilmember LaBaron? I'm looking out for the hard-working people of the city of Lemon Grove. I don't agree with the way that we're using taxpayer funds. I believe that we're wasting taxpayer funds, actually, and a lot of frivolous litigation that could be avoided. So I'm going to be voting no.
At this time, thank you.
Mayor Mountain?
Aye.
Three zero one with Mayor President Jones absent to ratify the demand.
Thank you so very much. Next is item 1D, which is the authorization to submit a grant application to Cal Recycle for the SB thirteen eighty-three Local Assistance Grant Program FY twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. And so I will turn this over to Councilmember LaBaron so that she may ask two questions, two questions max. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, councilmembers are allowed to pull consent items from the consent calendar, so that instead of these things being shuffled along, city staff is given the opportunity to discuss-
Councilmember LaBaron, please get to your question. Thank you.
No ma'am, I'm explaining what it means when a council member pulls a consent item. It means that staff needs to do a presentation on it right here and now. So after their presentation, I possibly can ask two questions. But staff needs to present on this. So please do.
At this time, I will ask-
I mean, I realize that you're trying to not have them discuss this in the public.
You're cutting off the presiding officer. You are out of order and clearly out of control. As I was stating, I will ask staff to give a brief summary of item 1D, which is the authorization to submit a grant application to Cal Recycle. So I'll turn this over to Lydia Romero.
No ma'am, staff actually has to give a full presentation on this. That's why it was pulled from the consent calendar. Are you aware of the policies and procedures that run this meeting? Are you aware of California governmental codes? Because when a council member pulls an agenda item from the consent calendar, it means that staff has to present, do a full presentation of it before the public. That's why I pulled it. Are you aware of that, ma'am?
What we will do at this time, we will check in with our city attorney to chime in regarding what is required regarding an item that was pulled from the consent calendar. So I'll turn this over to Kristen Steiney for clarification.
When an item is pulled from consent, it's dealt with separately than the consent calendar. Beyond that, I'm unaware of any rule that would require a full presentation, but I think that, you know, the summary is what's going to be provided right now.
Thank you so very much. And so now I will turn this over to our city manager, Lydia Romero. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and city councilmembers. This item relates to the city of Lemon Grove submitting a grant application to the Department of Resource Recycling and Recovery, also known as Cal Recycle, to request funding for a local assistance grant program for fiscal year twenty-one and twenty-two to support the implementation of SB eighteen eighty-three. And that is the organic waste recycling mandate by the state. The grant funds would pay for costs associated with conducting education and outreach, creating and establishing an edible food recovery program, conducting inspections, and enforcement of the local generators to ensure that they're complying with the regulations of thirteen eighty-three.
Thank you so very much. And Councilmember LaBaron, you may ask your two questions.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Lydia, how much staff time are we expecting to be devoted to this? To all those nice things that you just said would happen?
We will have to scope out the categories of the program, which is why we're asking for the grant, because we most likely will have to contract with someone to, that has the expertise, to do those programs. Such as the food edible recovery program. Staff, we don't have the expertise on staff to do that, so most likely we would be using this grant money to contract with somebody that does have that expertise.
How much is that contract gonna cost?
We don't know yet because we have to go out for a request for proposal to ensure that it comes in line with the grant request that we have of thirty-five thousand dollars.
I'm sorry, can you restate your last sentence?
Thank you so very much. And so at this time, I just wanna check that our-
Madam Mayor, you just interrupted me.
To see if they have any questions regarding this particular agenda item. And if not, then what I will do here is I will-
Madam Mayor, did you hear me? You interrupted me, ma'am.
Any additional questions or comments?
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, can you hear? You interrupted me and I wasn't done talking to the city manager. Do you allow me to complete my thought process and and continue with what I was saying to the city manager? Is that okay with you, Madam Mayor?
You currently have the floor to ask two more questions and/or make comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Lydia, I'm sorry, would you repeat that last sentence that you said something about thirty-five thousand? What was that? I'm sorry.
So we are in this grant submission, we are allowed thirty-five thousand dollars because it's a non-competitive per capita grant. So we're asking for the full grant amount of thirty-five thousand, five hundred and forty-five dollars.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so the grant is for thirty-five thousand dollars. You said that you don't know how much staff time is gonna be devoted to this, that actually we're gonna have to contract somebody? So from those thirty-five thousand, so from those thirty-five thousand dollars, are we gonna use any of that money to pay this person that you're saying we're gonna have to contract? This company that we're gonna have to contract to implement all this stuff?
Yes.
Okay. So we're gonna pay a contractor to, okay, so then what money, you know, these contracts are usually quite expensive. We just paid thirty thousand dollars for a kumbaya session, team building. That was thirty grand, this is thirty-five grand. How much of this money are we actually gonna be able to keep to do any?
Councilmember LaBaron, that is your third question. And at this time, I just wanna check to see if you have any comments regarding this agenda item. And if you do not have any additional comments, then we will go ahead and-
I'm just trying to figure out where this money is actually gonna end or going.
Speaking over me. As I mentioned, if you do not have any additional comments, then we will go ahead and move forward with the motion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I can ask a question.
Councilmember Gassel?
Yeah. I think it might be good to get our, and of course, this would just be a guess based on based on previous experiences. But of the money that we ask for, how much would we actually be using for recycling programs and how much would end up being used for administrative costs?
Um, we are not gonna be using any, uh, any of this money for, um, internal administrative costs. This will be all, all external. So if we get a contractor that stands up an edible food, uh, food recovery program, that money would be going directly to the contractor, not for the staff member that is managing the contract or overseeing the program.
Madam Mayor, I know earlier I had an opportunity to ask one more question. Would you grant me that now?
At this time, uh, I will not grant any additional questions. Um, so, uh, I'd like to see if we have a motion.
Ma'am, are you sure about that? I really would like to make an informed decision. And the only way I can get there is if I have all my questions answered, um...
As I stated earlier regarding your questions, uh, I allow two in the second round. You actually asked three questions in the second round. So, um, at this time, I'd like to see if we have a motion for this particular agenda item.
Yeah, I'll, I'll move approval.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, and I'll check in with our city clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Aye.
Councilmember Gassel?
Aye.
Councilmember LaBaron? Unfortunately, Councilmember Mendoza and, and the rest, um, don't allow me to get answers to very simple questions. So I can't make an informed decision without hearing from staff.
Please vote yes or no.
So unfortunately, to the detriment of the public who wants to know the answer to this question...
Continue on with the vote.
Mayor Vatkin?
Aye. Uh, three...
So my vote is...
One.
With Mayor Proton Jones absent. I'm sorry, how do you know my vote, Audrey?
Thank you so very much. The next item is item one...
I'm sorry, did you report that it was the three one?
Which is the authorization to submit notification of intent to comply with SB thirteen eighty-three to CalRecycle. And so, uh, since we did a brief summary with the previous agenda item, I'd like to check in with staff to do a brief summary, uh, fairly quickly. And then I will allow Councilmember, um, uh, LaBaron to ask two questions. Uh, two questions only. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is actually tied to the last agenda item, um, uh, for thirteen eighty-three, which is the CalRecycle item. And due to the challenges caused by COVID-nineteen pandemic, Governor, Governor Newsom signed, um, Senate Bill SB one six nine, whoops, excuse me, one nine six. Six one nine, I should know that, San Diego area code. Um, uh, that provides a one-year extension to agencies that need some additional time to implement the specific SB eighteen eighty-three requirements. The, to comply with this, uh, extension request, the city must submit a notification of intent to comply with the regulations and then submit documentations by March first to CalRecycle. Um, and so we, we are, are gonna be, um, submitting our intent if the council so approves it, that we will be, um, intending to comply with eighteen eighty-three using the grant monies that the council has just authorized to put in the full requirements of eighteen eighty-three.
Thank you so very much. Uh, Councilmember LaBaron, you may ask your two questions.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Lydia? I know you mentioned that we're gonna need to hire, we're gonna need to hire somebody to implement all sorts of things regarding to this Senate bill. Will organizations like Thrive with the Lemon Grove Community Garden be allowed to be awarded the contract for carrying outdoor required?
If they have experience in standing up, let's say, an edible food program.
They do. So they will be allowed? Yes?
If, when they respond to the RFP, they respond to the RFP and they are awarded, then they'll be awarded a contract. But we have to go through a procurement process because of the fact that we're using grant monies.
Thank you, because I noticed that on Tuesday, we gave an immense financial opportunity to an organization directly tied to the mayor, and they didn't have to go through an RFP process. So I just want to clarify and make sure that we're following the law, that we're being fair, that we're avoiding seeming like we're giving contracts to personal benefactors and friends of politicians because that truly does undermine the trust that people have in the local... So I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Do you have a second question? Please ask your second question. Thank you.
No, I, I see where the cards are lying with how we're choosing who we give contracts to here, and I don't agree at all. So that'll be reflected in my vote.
Thank you so very much. Do we have any additional questions from the council members? As we do not have any at this time, I'd like to see if we have a vote.
I'll make a motion. I will move to, um, uh, move for approval of the application for the local assistance specified grant.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. City clerk, please call the roll. Councilmember Mendoza?
Aye.
Councilmember Gassel?
Aye.
Councilmember LaBaron?
Sorry, Councilmember LaBaron. So I'm not gonna participate in abuse of our positions to grant contracts to our personal friends and benefactors. So I'm gonna go all in on this.
Thank you.
Mayor Vatkin?
Aye.
Three one, uh, two. Adopt a resolution authorizing the middle of a notification of intent to comply with SB thirteen eighty-three.
Uh, thank you so very much. Uh, at this time, um, we will bypass the city council reports and the city manager's report. And our next regularly scheduled...
Why won't we be doing that, ma'am?
Will be on March...
This meeting has only lasted an hour. Where are we gonna be bypassing that? Are we gonna make the public wait another meeting for them to hear reports on what we've been up to as their elected leaders? Your form of leadership is beyond, beyond weak. It's beyond troubled. The way that you're leading this city is completely repulsive, ma'am. You have a severe aversion to transparency and accountability. And I'm really, really, really saddened by your behavior, Madam Mayor. I just want everybody to know that the meeting was all, our regularly scheduled council meeting that was on Tuesday, February fifteenth, was canceled because of these leaders' childish behavior, and it was postponed till today. Putting you all at an inconvenience to have to come in for the second time in one week to hear your elected officials discuss official business. We're talking business. These are business meetings, and they're being ran very strangely. Okay, not only that, but another portion of our meetings, a portion where us council members get to tell you, the, the community, what we've been doing with your tax dollars, what we've been spending our time in, that has been postponed as well.
We know what you're doing. We see you. We, we know what you're doing. We don't see anybody else doing anything in our state, so thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for allowing them to operate and to speak with themselves. We see you working.
That's right. Thank you.